Want to call to order the Amberly Village Council Meeting of December 9, 2019. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattonback.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Lommer.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here.
If everyone will please rise and join me in the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with our charter, the next item on the agenda for our meeting, which our term provides that a regularly scheduled meeting in December following the election, that we will take nomination for mayor and vice mayor. So first nomination for mayor.
I'd like to move that to nominate Tom Muthing to serve another term as our mayor.
It has been moved and seconded that Tom Muthing for mayor. Are there any other nominations for mayor? If not, it has been moved and seconded that Tom Muthing serve the next two years as mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a question? Well, sorry, so before we proceed, why don't we have a square again for Councilwoman Warren who was not able to attend the square again a week ago Sunday. So if the, if... Yep. I state your name.
I am Mayor Warren.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly.
Do solemnly affirm, I'm sorry, that I shall follow.
That I shall follow.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter in ordinances.
Charter in ordinances.
Of Amberly Village, Ohio.
Ohio.
And shall faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
My duties as a council member.
My duties as a council member.
As prescribed by the Charter.
As prescribed by the Charter.
In ordinances of Amberly Village.
Ordinances of Amberly Village.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
Congratulations. Okay, now we'll take a slight step back. It's still been moved and seconded that Tom Muthing serve the next two years as mayor. We will now take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is noted that that passes unanimously. We will now take nominations for vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that Natalie Wolfe continue as our vice mayor.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that Councilwoman Wolfe serve the next two years as vice mayor. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that it has been moved and seconded that Councilwoman Wolfe serve the next two years as vice mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is noted that the approval will be unanimous. We will now have the square again of the mayor and vice mayor. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Tom Muthing.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I shall follow.
That I shall follow.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of Amberly Village, Ohio.
Of Amberly Village, Ohio.
And shall faithfully perform my duties as mayor.
And shall faithfully perform my duties as mayor.
As prescribed by the Charter.
As prescribed by the Charter.
And ordinances of Amberly Village.
And ordinances of Amberly Village.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the State of Ohio. Congratulations. Just last but not the least. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Natalie Wolfe.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
As a member of the council of Amberly Village, Ohio.
And do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I shall follow.
That I shall follow.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of Amberly Village, Ohio.
Of Amberly Village, Ohio.
And shall faithfully perform my duties as vice mayor.
And shall faithfully perform my duties as vice mayor.
As prescribed by the Charter.
As prescribed by the Charter.
And ordinances of Amberly Village.
And ordinances of Amberly Village.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the State of Ohio. Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is also in accordance with our charter. We will now have the appointment of solicitor, the treasurer of Amberly Village and the clerk of council for the next two years.
I, uh, it's mayor. I would like to start, we're starting with our village solicitor and also our village prosecutor. This is ordinance 2019-12. Kevin McDonough has been our solicitor now, our village solicitor, for a couple of years. He's at Wood and Lamping and he is, this is a homecoming to Amberly and we're happy to have him back. A very good teammate for these meetings. And our prosecutor, Stacy Lefton, is hiding in the back row but also part of this ordinance. So we are, these are both reappointments and we have, the business today is to, we're going to waive the three readings and, uh, is also the first.
I'm going to abstain. Some of our prosecutors are probably pleased.
Okay, so the first thing that we, that I would like to move that we waive the three readings for ordinance 2019-12.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to ordinance 2019-12, appointing the village solicitor. Are there any questions or comments with respect to that? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings for ordinance 2019-12. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Mr. Mayor.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Okay, next, I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 2019-12, appointing our solicitor and prosecutor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-12, appointing Mr. McDonough as village solicitor and Ms. Lefton as our village prosecutor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-12. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Mr. Mayor.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
And finally, I would like to move that we adopt ordinance, sorry, declare an emergency for ordinance 2019-12, the appointment of our solicitor and prosecutor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-12 as an emergency measure which will allow the appointment to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-12 as an emergency measure. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Mr. Mayor.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Now we move on to the appointment of village treasurer.
Yes, I am happy to recommend that we're, we're going to reappoint, we'd like to reappoint Rick Kay as our treasurer. This is a position he has held and faithfully served in since 2008 with lots of flexibility and creativity to get all the tasks taken care of. So like we did with solicitor, I'd first like to move that we waive free readings on ordinance 2019-13.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive free readings with respect to ordinance 2019-13, the appointment of the village treasurer. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive free readings on ordinance 2019-13. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
And now I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 2019-13, appointing Rick Kay as village treasurer.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-13, appointing Rick Kay as village treasurer. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-13. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
And finally, I move that we pass this as an emergency measure in order that it can go into effect right away and have continuous service.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-13 as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-13 as an emergency measure. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
And finally, I move that we pass this as an emergency measure in order that it can go into effect right away and have continuous service.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-14, appointing Tammy Reesner as clerk of council. And it's our next ordinance. Tammy serves a dual role with the village, being the executive assistant to Scott Lommer, the manager, and she's also the clerk of council, and I will add, she's also a resident of Amberly Village. I'd first like to make the motion to waive free readings of ordinance 2019-14, appointing Tammy Reesner as clerk of council for the 2019-2021 council term. Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive free readings with respect to ordinance 2019-14. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive free readings with respect to ordinance 2019-14. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
I'd now like to make the motion to approve ordinance 2019-14, appointing Tammy Reesner as clerk of council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-14, appointing Tammy Reesner as clerk of council. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-14. Please call and roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you and congratulations to solicitor and the village prosecutor, our treasurer and our clerk of court. Look forward to working with you all. Thank you. Now we move on to the approval of our minutes. First, our regularly scheduled council meeting of November 11, 2019. Those minutes were circulated in the package of the council. Are there any additions, changes to those minutes? Seeing none, the minutes can be approved. Also, the minutes from our work session meeting of November 12, 2019. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those minutes can consider, are, be considered approved. Now we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation to our supervisor for meaningless speaking. I'm going to come down front.
This presentation was associated with the tornado that occurred in Beaver Creek in the Dayton area. And a number of, a number of communities, including Amberly, committed resources to the effort to respond to, to that effort. And Tony and his team were a part of that team. And the city of Beaver Creek came around to the various communities and read proclamations and made presentations. So I would like to first read the proclamation that the city of Beaver Creek made to the village of Amberly. Whereas the Memorial Day tornado hit Beaver Creek on Monday, May 27, 2019, at approximately 11:18 PM, leaving a path of massive destruction and loss. And whereas Amberly Village came to our aid, giving tirelessly of your time, energy, and effort to assist us with the damage recovery. And whereas neighbors, helping neighbors spanned beyond the borders of Beaver Creek with contributions from cities, villages, townships, park districts, counties, and the state. And whereas Amberly Village generously provided staff and equipment to help the Beaver Creek residents begin to recover from the devastation left by the tornado. Now therefore, I Bob Stone, mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the city council and our entire community, wish to thank Amberly Village and express our sincere appreciation for your assistance as our city continues the process of healing and rebuilding. Your presence and generosity in our time of need was uplifting to Beaver Creek and will never be forgotten. Tony's team went up for three days to the city and, and contributed over 50 hours between six employees towards that cleanup. And, you know, this is a case of, you know, this is something the communities do. There have been cases where Amberly Village, after a storm or something, has had other communities help us. But Tony, I really want to thank you and your team for everything you did to do that. It really puts Amberly Village in a great light. And each of, each of Tony's team is going to be receiving a copy of this framed picture as well as a, a memorial. A, see, it's a challenge point and each of their team will be receiving this. And Beaver Creek also wanted to give each of these to the members of council. And I, I would have to say, the members of council are receiving this on behalf of all the residents of Amberly Village because it is really all the residents of Amberly Village that was willing to commit Tony and his team to, to allow that, you know, because it does take away from what they were able to do here, but it was something very critical. So Tony, thanks a lot.
Okay, well now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our finance report for October 2019.
I'd like to talk about the general fund financial status as of the end of October. Earnings tax for the month of October totaled a little over $247,000. This was up slightly from October 2018's collections of $245,000. The estimate for collection for this year was $2,750,000. As of the end of October, the village has obtained $2.6 million. So we're 95% away from the collection for the earnings tax. The village did not receive any property tax during the month of October, which has not been usual. The village did book a little over $5,200 in local government funds. Those are monies that come from the, through the state of Ohio back to the village. So our revenue for the total, the revenue for the month of October totaled $380,000. That brings our total for the general fund at $4.7 million. Our estimate for the entire year is $4.9 million. So we're at 95% collection at that point, at this point as well. On the expense side for the general fund, the expenses for the month of October totaled a little over $457,000. And our expenditures as of year-to-date for, as of October 31st is just a little over $4 million. The budget for 2019 is $5.3 million. So the village has expended 75% of the budget as of the end of October. And that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance at the end of October of $5.9 million.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Not, we move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is for the group of citizens to speak. And the way, for those that are unmayor with this, under our charter, any resident or any individual can speak before council. Our charter provides a time limit of three minutes. And just to help people out, this button up here, it'll show green when it's agreed, when it starts at 30 seconds, it'll go to yellow, and then at the end of three minutes, it'll go to red. So our first person to address council is Rabbi Smolkin. So help me.
Thank you so much. And I've been told to go ahead and, at this point, state my name, which is Moshe Smolkin. And I live at 3240 Fairhaven Lane. I'm really quite honored to, to be here and to be living here in Amberly Village. As a little bit of background, I grew up in Texas and New Mexico. Actually, my, my bachelor's was in mathematics from Brandeis University. My master's is in secondary math ed from Tufts. And I was a high school math teacher for five years before I went to rabbinical school out in Los Angeles. I interned in Venice, Venice Beach, California. And for the last decade have been the rabbi at Ovay Zion Synagogue in Lexington, Kentucky. And I'm just thrilled to, to be the new senior rabbi at Adath Israel Congregation. Every interaction since moving here that I've had with any of the officials from Amberly Village has been wonderful. Whether it's asking for how, how to set up things in, in terms of our house and things like that, whether any interactions with, with the police. Chief Wallace, I'm very grateful for just an incredible department, an incredible staff that, that you have provided the city. I'm very grateful for you. Thank you so much. Really, I, I also wanted just to express my immense gratitude for this council. It is not always perhaps easy to be where you are in the role of governance and leading our community into the future. The Bible shares that King Solomon had asked for wisdom and God was pleased with that request. And so I, I wish to bless all of you with, with wisdom and the sensitivity to listen to each individual's concerns while recognizing that it literally may be impossible to satisfy each individual's concerns. Tim Patton is, is a wonderful individual and manages the facilities at Adath Israel Congregation. And our president, John Stillpass, was praising him and praised him for both keeping the temperature too hot and too cold in the synagogue. And I think there's, there's a lot to be said for that, that, that you're in a difficult role. I think it's, it's a very important role because it guides our community into the future. Any way that I can help, I'm very glad to have been kind of in various places across the Jewish world. And I think actually that having different viewpoints is very important, whether it's in Judaism or it's in politics. And if I can be a support to any of you, if you ever have any questions regarding Judaism or the Jewish community, please, please don't hesitate at all to reach out to me. I want to support you in any way that I can. And I thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you very much. And you're welcome. Likewise, anytime you need to, you know, come to forecouncil, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Please, please come whenever you, you need anything more that you want to say.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next person on the agenda is Monica Lyra. Is Monica here?
No.
Matthew. Again, I should have said, when you come, come up, if you could also just state your name and address before starting your, what you want to say.
Okay. My name is Matthew Kraus and I live at 2580 Twigwood Lane. And I'm here representing the Amberly Village Human Rights Commission, which consists of the chair, Monica Lyra, James Boney, the vice chair, myself, and Nancy Warren, who's also here. And then we also had David Gladney, but he was transferred to China for work, so he couldn't make it and serve on the commission anymore. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. This commission was established by an ordinance of Amberly Village Council. And we thought, and it's a new commission, we thought it'd be appropriate to at least report on what we have been doing. And we've really had two tasks that we have been considering. First is we were supposed to establish a format for any complaints dealing with violations of human rights for protected classes, particularly race, gender, and sexual orientation. And so we have established an email that's available at the Amberly Village website for any complaints. And I'm happy to report, we haven't had any complaints yet. And the second part of what the commission's been doing is trying to get a sense of the landscape of what are, how are human rights being protected? Are there any issues in the community? And what we've been delighted to discover is that people feel very comfortable in the village of Amberly, that they feel very supported and, and valued in this community. And so we have also felt that we want to advertise and promote the values and this atmosphere of caring for people in all these protected classes. So we've had, I think, something in the newsletter that came out showing that we exist. And that also testifies to how supportive Amberly is of all peoples, regardless, and all diverse people. And also, we were, had a table at the Ice Cream Social and we had some very positive feedback. And people were, who didn't know that we existed, were delighted to know that Amberly is supportive of this type of initiative. And so that's really what we're working on now, is to address any complaints, which we hope won't happen, but also to advertise and promote the fact that Amberly is such a warm and welcoming place. And our next meeting is this Thursday and all members of council are of course welcome to come and residents are welcome to come. And we're happy to entertain any suggestions and feedback.
Thank you.
Oh, and I, yeah.
Any questions or comments? The one thing I would add is Matthew mentioned that we currently have, have a vacancy for any Amberly resident who would be interested in serving, serving. Can I, that is, the application should go through you?
It's on.
It's online?
It's available on the website, and actually, the application says you have it on.
Okay. This is a council appointment. The way the appointments do the human rights commission work is, there's one mayor's appointment, there's one village manager appointment, and there are three council appointments. This will be a council appointment for that. And we would like to get the commission up to a full group as soon as possible. So if you're interested, please get your application in. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
First, thanks so much for coming here and sharing what's been going on. In fact, you're certainly, as is Monica and the whole committee, certainly welcome to come to council. Perhaps maybe on a regular basis, give us a report in terms of what's going on, what feedback you have. And certainly, if you have any needs, if the committee, the commission has any needs, to certainly share them with us as well. Anyway, thank you for being here.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next resident, Dr. Agnew. Well, there's really a couple of residents, both they're living and working.
Hi, I'm Abby Ucalas. My address is 6696 Fair Oaks Drive. And I have the great pleasure of also working in Amberly Village at Mercy Health, Amberly Village, 8599 Ridge Road. So I'm kind of here really more representing Mercy Health. My office manager was supposed to be here, but she unfortunately is at an emergency room with a family member right now, so she couldn't be here. So the issue essentially revolves around rush hour on Ridge in the morning primarily. We usually have our first visit at 8:00 in the morning, and then at 8:15. And on a rainy, snowy, or a day where there is traffic on the highways due to an accident, the entire traffic flow on Ridge, as you all probably can imagine, is messed up. And so people can take, you know, 20 minutes to travel, five minutes. So very often, our first patients are late to their appointment. So that is why I'm here, to see if there was a way to have perhaps a police officer at a corner, maybe Ridge and Galbraith, or even closer to the J around Cross County where things seem to tie up, to help move the traffic along, since we are, you know, we are an employer in Amberly, and it's hard for us to see our patients timely, and then it kind of throws off the whole rest of the morning for everybody. Doesn't happen every day, but it's pretty predictable on a bad weather day, or if there's an accident. And even people will try to get around, and sometimes there's no escape, even if you go down to Reading Road or try to work yourself around, there's still no easy way to not have a long trip. So, that's it.
Do you have any comments?
No, we can, we'll take a look at it on traffic flow. I mean, us changing, operating the intersection of Galbraith and Ridge or another intersection, we create other issues other places. That's why the sequence of lights are set the way they are. Unfortunately, with that intersection, some of the lights are Reading's lights, then there's our lights.
Right.
The manager's been working with their engineers, as well as our engineers, trying to come up with a way, get a better sequence to get the more traffic through at any given time.
Right. And people complain about getting off Cross County. It's definitely been a little bit worse since Reading High School reopened. And also, the corner where people have to turn out of our main drive is an accident waiting to happen, as you can imagine.
We could put an additional stop line in that area. Tony has been working on that as well. We'll, you know, we'll go up there and watch it and see what we can do.
Just want to make you aware.
No, we are aware it's a problem, but the amount of traffic, if the weather, whether it's rain, snow, or whatever, a lot of people won't drive the highway in the rain. So everybody comes off. That's why Reading Road's just as bad, Ridge is just as bad. And we have the same problem when there's an accident. Our traffic doubles and triples here because of that.
Yeah. And it happens in the evening as well, but the bigger concern is in the morning, just getting the day started. So, okay. Thank you.
Next person, Susan Glazer.
Hi, I'm Susan Glazer at 9055 Rolling Ridge Court. And I'm here once again just to speak on behalf of the Amberly Green. What I remember from the last workshop meeting that I attended, Tom Muthing mentioned that the property value of the Amberly Green is worthless. He said that quite a few times. I walked away from that going, really? If it's that worthless, why is the JCC interested in the property? Well, one of the reasons, because you're giving it to them for a dollar a year. But you were also discussing other possibilities of retail and whatnot, hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera, coming. If it was worthless, why would they want to come? So that's a question I would like to have answered at some point. I don't understand why it's worthless. Secondly, before we make any future decisions on the plan, the location, the zoning, et cetera, will we get definitive earnings tax revenue from the JCC? Will we also get information on how many jobs will be created at the Green and at the current campus? This would seem to be a critical need to know regarding traffic flow, congestion, required safety services, and potentially impact on these services before we make any deals, proposals, or changes to current property. My next question to you is, will the village and the JCC guarantee this earnings tax revenue? That's a pretty important one. So will the village, Amberly Village, and the JCC guarantee this earnings tax revenue? I have a lot of other questions, but those are the main ones. But mostly, what I'm concerned about is how you can say that the Amberly Green is worthless. I can't imagine that that land and that property is worthless. It's green in the middle, I mean, in the middle of a city. Central Park isn't worthless. Thank you.
And I do want to correct. What I said was, as a park, it is, it has no value. Central Park has no value. You can't sell a park. So it has no value. If somebody says, I want this as a park only, it is not saleable. That's all I said.
Okay. Thank you.
Next person, Brenda Schoenfield.
Hello, my name is Brenda Schoenfield, and I live at 7640 El Brook. I've been in the village for 49 years. And on November the 5th, when we voted, I had a very puzzling experience. For a while, I voted at Los Anaville School. But most of my time in Amberly, I have voted here at the courthouse. And even if it was a presidential election, there was, there were a few people at a time who came in to vote. They would come, they would go, just an ordinary amount of people. For the last eight years, I've been coming at 4:30 in the afternoon. I pick up my grandson from school, drop him off, and come to vote. I was so surprised when the room was full and people were double abreast, out the door, almost up into the parking lot. And I recognized all of them, and they were voting in a block. There has been a recent migration from New York, which has populated the El Brook area. El Brook is a border street from, and from Los Anaville to Section Road, almost 95% of the people are recent migrants from the New York area. And up Section Road to the railroad tracks, and in the other direction to Farm Acres. And up El Brook to Twigwood, 75%. They have a very casual lifestyle. They have different values than Midwesterners. Sometimes the lawns are mowed, sometimes the leaves are collected, the children's toys and swimming pools are on the front lawn. It's, when they get a citation, they ignore it. And if you feel that you are immune from this casual style of living, the migration is moving up Section Road. Because now, most of Farm Acres is receiving these people who have migrated here from the New York area. Therefore, they voted in a block. I don't want you to delude yourself by thinking that you won a popularity contest on November the 5th. There were concessions made, or these people would not have voted in a block. And that's what's happening. And I can assure you, by the next election, there will be more people migrating from New York, and they will be running for the Amberly Village Council. And they will be having their values put on this village. So just think about that. And the most important thing you can bring to your job is a clear conscience. And I have been puzzled about what concessions were made, that they was the largest turnout I have ever seen in 49 years. What did they get in return? Thank you.
Ms. Schoenfield?
Yes.
Would you mind coming back? I have some questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to speak to council. We, I believe, like our residents, to feel that they are free to come and speak to council. But your comments did leave me with some questions. First of all, you stated that you were coming to speak regarding issues on El Brook. But I, I actually think, maybe you, are you, are you stating that you think that there were a block of people who voted illegally?
No. I feel, no, I do not feel that they would. This is what's been very puzzling to me.
I have another question for you, because you really, I think you stated your concerns, but you left me also wondering if you feel that people who are registered voters in Amberly do not have an equal right to the ballot box as you yourself do as a 49-year resident of Amberly Village.
They have an equal right to the ballot box. But why were more people at this election than in the 49 years that I was voted? Were they reciprocating something?
Well, is this just your suspicion, like if we come to the board of elections and you ask them to show you the voter turnout percentage for Amberly Village on this past election versus any other previous elections? Because I can tell you as someone who has been actively running for council in Amberly, serving on council since 2011, Amberly does always have a high civic turnout for elections. It's something I'm very proud of, that Amberly voters, they turn out, they show up and turn out. But the other question I have maybe is, do you have, are you really making a property maintenance complaint? Because we are analyzing the property maintenance code.
I am.
I mean, I, I, I'm just, I...
I think it's, I think it's a...
I'm a little discouraged at your, by your casting aspersions that are really not quite so couched in, against a particular community in Amberly, and I suspect that you're talking about the Orthodox community.
No, no. I am not talking about them specifically because there are two components to the Orthodox community. I'm talking about the newest arrivals. And I feel that I have come for eight years now at 4:30 in the afternoon, and I have never seen many people come as a group at one time.
Well, I really appreciate your take, your interest in voting, and that you vote in every election, and as do I. And I, I really, I'm flabbergasted that you would cast aspersions on other citizens of Amberly Village who are exercising their equal right to vote.
Okay. All right. I appreciate what you have to say. But as a consistent voter, when I saw this large group come together, I thought they were making a statement. They re-elected the council by a very big majority, and I have felt that they were promised something. And I have been very curious what the quid pro quo was.
Your honor, from mayor, can I say something?
We need to move on to... Okay. So, we do, we do anything for you.
Question, Ms. Schoenfield, you made a comment regarding ordinances not being followed and citations being ignored. I'd just like to ask, is the truth to that, that's my one, that's one...
No, we're constantly writing letters on that street, as well as throughout the whole community. Are there houses, older houses and things like that down there? Yes. Are we issuing a number of citations and sending letters out? Yes. We'll continue to do that throughout the entire village. We don't pick and choose where we do it at.
Thank you. The other comment I had in terms of voter turnout this past election was actually under 50%, which historically, and mind you, this is an off-year election. Imagine a presidential election next year will attract many more voters. But we typically have a lot more people engaged in voting process than in the election. So this past, you know, November was actually on the low side rather than what's typical.
Okay. Now move on to the next resident to address, Colin Driscoll.
Colin Driscoll, 6600 Ridge Road. County auditor records show the Ridge Club transferred four parcels known as Amberly Green to Amberly Village on October 10th, 2008. The county auditor performed their three-year reappraisal at the end of '08. The tentative value for the four parcels was set at $6.2 million. The village challenged the tentative value, stating it was too high. The village filed a counter complaint in July 2009, seeking a value of $4.6 million. The case was resolved at a board, at the board of revision hearing that October, setting the value at $5.9 million. The auditor recently performed their three-year reappraisal at the close of '17. The $6.7 million assigned value was not challenged by the village. This same basic process governs the calculation of real estate taxes for every village resident. On multiple occasions in council sessions, I've heard the mayor state or strongly imply the property has little to no value. Council members present when these statements were made, made to me, didn't publicly question this notion of little to no value. So my question is this, how can council fiduciaries negotiate the best value for what I've demonstrably just shown to be a multimillion-dollar village asset working from a premise of little to no value?
Are there, you said?
That's, that's, I'm short, for a change.
Are there any questions for comments? Thank you. And again, I will reiterate what I, what I've said, is that as a park, just as French park, is...
I know you said French park has no value to the city, and like Amberly Green really has no value to the village. And I would, like, if a new entity came into the city, I assume the city would, would really say that it, it's a valuable asset, just as anybody that comes into the old Gibson site, we're going to talk about, I would assume we'd promote, you know, Amberly Green and the value and the park and... and the value and the park and, and that kind of a thing.
Okay. And again, the point is that many residents do, do want Amberly Green to be part.
I'm Steve Kishard, thirty-two oh five North White Tree Circle. My comments tonight are more about the zoning, but it kind of ties into a little bit about what they've been mentioning about the property value of the green. But in the most recent Village Newsletter, I know we've got another work session coming up to talk about the zoning language changes. And it was noted that the zoning language changes are necessary for any development on the property, but are particularly timely as the village considers this proposal we have from the JCC. So I have like three comment, or three questions and one little comment at the end. My first question kind of goes around some of the, the property value things that have been talked about is that, do you intend to make zoning changes to the green prior to having a master plan developed? Second question, do you intend to make zoning changes before getting an independent third-party valuation of the Amberly, Amberly Green property? And the last question, in June, it was noted we offered the JCC the thirty-acre property for a dollar a year. Do you, do you intend to move forward with this offer before getting this independent third-party valuation on the property? Because to me, I mean, keep in mind, once you start down this development road, dirt gets moved, trees come down, you'll never be able to get, you know, to return to what we currently have with our mature trees and rolling hills. I don't know how you can make a value proposition to our residents without first having a master plan, which I've talked about before, and knowing the current value of the property and the future value after these proposed zoning changes take place. To me, it's, it's, I think they're two separate things you need to look at. The one comment I'd like to make, though, is in late October, the mayor's done published this two-page flyer they, that they had, they put up at the JCC, it was right up front in a, in a kiosk, and it was available primarily only to members of the J. And in this flyer, there, we've looked, a number of us have looked at this, there was basically some misleading, unverifiable, inaccurate information that was communicated about the benefits to the village, things such as virtually no cost, continued increase revenue of several hundred thousand dollars per year, things like that. Then they came out with their media campaign, Business Journal, Enquirer, their open houses. And then right after that, and as I understand, when they announced the open house, talking to a couple of council people, council was kind of blindsided that they were doing this open house, that you didn't know about it. Now, I may be misinformed by that, but I was told that that was the case. I saw Tammy even put something out on Nextdoor Amberly that said, "We have nothing to do with this, this is coming out." So, you know, to me, after three years of working with the village, is this how a trusted partner behaves? You know, they obviously wanted us to believe something was not entirely correct. And then since then, they've come out with another brochure that doesn't really mention any of the things that were pretty much talked about in this. So I just want to know is, did, did council or anybody from the village actually talk to the JCC about this first flyer that went out, and then why they changed some of their information? Yeah?
First, thanks for coming by.
You're welcome.
I wasn't here at last council meeting, and I wanted to say, first, I wanted to thank you and Colin for staging a great campaign.
Thank you.
Regarding your question, your last question, and this is something I've shared with council, I did have a, an email sent to Mr. Fisher of the J, actually commenting on that first flyer that we talked about regarding income to the village, and asking him essentially the same questions that have been asked earlier this evening regarding what's the source of the income? Is it guaranteed to the village? Things along that nature. I never received a reply. So to be clear, there are people on council who are, who want to know what the proposal is, and frankly, I haven't seen formal proposal from the J. I'm waiting to see one. But to be clear, you know, we're elected officials and we have, we're fiduciaries to this village, and that's really what I want to say. Thank you.
And councilors and members.
Okay. Thank you.
But I want to add, the JCC is, is not Amberly Village Council, and they do not have any, you know, they are not required to come to council and ask permission to have an open house to inform their members or anyone who's interested in what they would like to do. And frankly, I wish that they had been taking moral role in doing that along the way so that members of the J and residents of Amberly Village could have even more insight into what their plans are. But, you know, they don't have any requirement to come and ask permission from us to run their business the way that they want.
Oh, I fully understand, but when they put out information that's somewhat misleading, we should challenge them on it, because they were obviously trying to persuade someone or something about their proposal. That's the only comment I have to make about that. Thank you.
Okay, now move on to committee supports. The first is the fire committee, which, if I apply my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have is take of the contract with the village, the contract with the property casualty insurance. A short partner, the first says, it will be village property casualty insurance. It's compensated and weighted through thirteen thousand dollars per year for his risk casualty services. The firm, sure partners as a part of said number of those for thirteen years. And this particular year, we have put the contract out for bids, and two companies bid over the contract target, which is with our certain property casualty insurance for many years. And resort insurance, the resort came in with a bid of seventy thousand, twenty-nine dollars less than what we had paid last year. So the insurance contract for two thousand, for a year, will be sixty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars. It includes some other improvements in our cover. Accordingly, the village's resolution authorized the village manager to enter to a contract resort for property casualty insurance.
Second.
Okay, if we move to the second, if we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-one, which would authorize village managers to enter into a contract resort providing the village's property casualty insurance. Are there any questions or comments? If not, if we move to the second, if we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-one. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed, she agrees.
The second, which pretends to the insurance is in contract with official of surety slip kit for a three-year term, years two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand one, and for the fee of thirteen thousand dollars. Accordingly, the resolution of two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two, resolution authorized the village manager to enter to a contract with a sure partner's, the slip kit for professional services, with property casualty insurance.
Second.
If you move to the second, if we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, authorizing the village manager to enter into the contract with the surety slip kit. Are there any questions or comments? If not, if we move to the second, if we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed, she agrees.
Next item is ordinance of appropriations. Each year, December, all revenue and expenses first year are viewed to ensure the village has not exceeded the allowable appropriation of any fund. Appropriations may not be more than the total estimated revenue resources. Total estimated resources, this is the review, can be made out, each fund at the end of year, also distributed to the following. This category, this category for the end of year, it is often necessary to reduce appropriations with estimated resources not paid expenditures. Several funds need to be reduced. Revenue of the payer's court fund needs to be reduced by, because revenue is less than ten thousand dollars, the appropriations need to be reduced by ten thousand dollars. And payer's court computer fund reduced by fifteen thousand dollars. Appropriations, store-bought utility fund, sorry, twelve thousand dollars. This is a result of the evaluation of the property in hundreds, I should go, it was full back of that fund. The employee's health insurance fund needs to be reduced by three thousand nine hundred and four hundred and six dollars. And the Kedland Jets Esco fund needs to be reduced by fifty thousand dollars. The agency's Southwest Jets Esco agency fund be reduced by six thousand five hundred dollars. Accordingly, I move that we, two thousand nineteen and fifteen, ordinance appropriations for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, if we move to the second, if we adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash fifteen, making appropriations for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Are there any questions or comments? If not, if we move to the second, if we adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash fifteen, please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peggy Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Finally, the finance committee met several times to review the budget from year twenty and five quarters to the top quarters of two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, appropriations and spending expenditures for fiscal year, may be submitted first two thousand twenty. Something interesting, yes, reflecting on the items two thousand nineteen. The purchase attribute for two thousand nineteen will exceed the current budget, which has been about two thousand, twenty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our expectations are that the revenue will be close to eight nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Estimated revenue for the, the special made in November two thousand nineteen projected general fund, thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The village's last year was a positive operating balance, approximately eighty, seventy thousand dollars, which includes a budget transfer, forty thousand dollars in store-bought fund. There is for the village's realized revenue two thousand nineteen, the great task, share local government fund, which is an interesting one. Accordingly, it looks like, considering the budget for two thousand twenty, has expected revenues costing five hundred and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Expected expenditures, which have been appropriated, five hundred and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is very small. Surplus of the basic expenditures that we expect for two thousand twenty, our security of purchase of property, two hundred and three, two hundred and three, three thousand dollars, public health, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, basic utility services, twenty six thousand, property maintenance, two thousand five fifteen, transportation, maybe fifteen thousand, general government fund, some government expenditures, twenty four hundred and one thousand, the contingency is twenty thousand dollars, transfers, insurance system over the past several years, twenty thousand dollars. Accordingly, I move to top quarters of two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, boarding stake appropriations for expenses for village Amberly for fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, if we move to the second, if we adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask maybe Scott and Tammy, for people who are interested in looking at our budget and all that, we do open checkbook, and we'll have this on our website and all that stuff. If you are interested.
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments? I think I would stress that, the thing that Mr. Hattonback pointed out is that the current outlook for twenty nineteen is a surplus, and the outlook for twenty twenty is also surplus, which is contrary to what some others have said. So it has been moved in second, if we adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, making appropriations for fiscal twenty twenty. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peggy Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, now move on to the police and fire committee.
Thank you. The committee met on November twenty-seventh as part of the budget process, just for kind of informational purposes, to hear what was expected in the police-fire budget for the upcoming year. Of note is that the chief is, has proposed an additional position in the fire area to create a position of fire captain. We, the committee was interested in learning more about that and continuing discussion about that. He noted that the fire operations becoming more complex with more reporting and more things to track of, and currently the duties are spread out as multiple people, and it might be good going forward to have a concentrated job for someone to monitor the equipment and training and that. So we did recommend that that be funded at least partially in twenty twenty, to see where that might lead. As I've noted before, we do meet at least quarterly, and so I think we'll be discussing that further as time goes on. We also began discussion that day of the EMS contract versus the medical services contract. We have had for many years contracts with both Deer Park Silverton and Wolf Manor, which is now Little Miami. We are coming to the end of the three-year contract. Currently, the rate, this year, we paid one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. They presented a renewal proposal that jumped the rate up significantly next year, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and they wanted a ten percent increase every year for five years, which was a very significant jump. They did not seem able to negotiate, and so Scott and Chief kind of rejected that and began to look at other options, and the committee was on board with that. We met again on December fifth to review a proposal that had been received by the City of Reading to provide our EMS. It was a little, it's higher to start with, but with lower increases. That day, there were also representatives from Deer Park Silverton and Little Miami who wanted, you know, to weigh in further and kind of offer us more information, and they did at this time indicate some willingness to negotiate, so the committee opted to ask staff to work with them further to see what might be possible, and so we did not have a report before that. I can be a mistake, but we're aware of the work to be having done. But this is my report.
Are there any questions? If not, then we'll move on to the streets, public, or no, I'm sorry, the health education board.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the privilege of reporting on We Thrive tonight, the Health Education and Welfare Committee did not meet, but last Tuesday night, Mayor, myself, and some other community members went to the We Thrive Annual Recognition Program, which celebrates schools, communities, and childcare providers that have made a continued commitment to improving health and safety and vitality across Hampton County. Since the recognition program began in two thousand fourteen, Hampton County Public Health has been pleased to celebrate the accomplishments of the We Thrive communities like ourselves and Amberly Village at the annual event. Forty communities were celebrated, and Amberly Village was recognized for their five years since, since two thousand fourteen, when We Thrive was sort of revamped, creating new pathways, and Amberly Village has been very involved with two, currently two committees in the community working to make Amberly a better place to work, pray, and play, as they say in We Thrive. And I want to specifically mention that Carol Donilon, who chairs our new, our new work on chronic disease pathway. on the chronic disease pathway, and Jim Ruley were both nominated as community champions for our community, which is a designation given to someone who puts their community first, tries to make the community a better place without any thought for recognition on their own. So I have your proclamation from the Hampton County Board of Health that I'd like to quickly read and that my whole hand of room would be hanging up somewhere outside the wall. So this is a proclamation and recognition of the two thousand nineteen We Thrive communities. Whereas Hampton County Public Health's We Thrive initiative, established in two thousand nine in Amberly Village as a charter member, creates partnerships between communities, agencies and public health to generate broad-based support for creating healthy environments for all residents where they could work, learn and play. And whereas Hampton County Public Health revitalized and expanded the We Thrive initiative in two thousand fourteen to include additional pathways and processes to support the establishment of infrastructure within communities to enact meaningful change. Whereas We Thrive initiative encourages long-lasting change from creation and adoption of policies that support the health, safety and vitality of the community. And whereas We Thrive initiative seeks to engage communities in the development of a committee dedicated to the implementation of a selection of pathways focusing on major areas of health, safety and preparedness. And whereas Amberly Village has assumed an active leadership role in improving the health and safety of its community members as a We Thrive community. Now therefore, we have complained that Amberly Village has successfully met or exceeded continuation requirements for the two thousand nineteen We Thrive community recognition and that the Board of Health, Hampton County Public Health recognizes Amberly Village for its ongoing commitment to improving the health, safety and vitality of its community. And I really, I hope that more of our residents, and of all, I have Dr. Aggie Upliss is here speaking tonight and she's our newest community member representing Mercy Health on the chronic disease pathway. And we would love to have members of other Amberly organizations and businesses join us in making Amberly the best place to live for everyone.
Any questions or comments? If not, then we move on to the work from the streets committee.
I'm going to request that, just for the sake of time, we have no action to take from the streets committee meeting that we had a week ago. I just distributed the minutes from that meeting. I haven't had any comments back. I may get comments, so I'd like to just defer this discussion till our next council meeting, our next council meeting.
Now move on to the compensation and benefits committee.
Great, thank you. So the compensation and benefits committee met on November twenty-fifth and we actually had a variety of presentations in this committee. We had, had several conversations here, always reviewing our benefits for our employees, making sure that we are competitive with our peers, that we are keeping our employees happy, that we're managing and stewarding our money appropriately. So we had some presentations on a couple of items that had been kind of brought up to us by our employees earlier in the year. So first, we had a presentation on fire pay. It was a very interesting discussion about how our unique compensation works because of our joint, you know, all our, our firefighters work in multiple departments and it's very complicated, so we had a very interesting presentation about that. And there was no action taken on that. We, we are not expecting to take any action on that, but, but we'll stay tuned for, the chief alerted us that there are kind of always ongoing review in his department about ways to bonus and compensate folks who respond to fire calls. Next, we talked about the employee severance fund. That was just an update again, as Councilmember Conway mentioned, we got a, you know, kind of in the context of budget updates, this, each committee kind of got updates on different things related to the budget. In this case, it was about the employee severance fund. This is a really smart thing that we have been doing to budget for kind of the, I'm going to try to say this delicately, we, we have a workforce that is, we, we expect retirements coming in the next several years and we are basically putting aside money smartly each year so that we are not completely blindsided by a big hit in a couple of years, like a giant hit with having to get the, kind of the cash out of the money that comes when people hit retirement. So we are again budgeting forty thousand dollars that we've devoted this year in this two thousand twenty budget for that. And, and that has now a very healthy balance. We also had a discussion about PTO. Again, this is sort of wonky government stuff, but our employees receive their time off through different buckets, vacation time, sick time, PTO comes from different buckets, unlike many in the private sector who use the sort of like one big bucket for things. And so we had a, a presentation and conversation about how that works and asked the administration to come back to us about whether PTO, we could review the opportunity for PTO to not come from sick time. We felt like we wanted to see what other options are. We're not really on par with our peers on that, peer communities, so we're going to ask for some additional stuff on that. And then also coming soon, just very quickly, we introduced an ordinance that I've been working on to revise, part of our administrative code, administrative procedures in our code around our, somewhat archaic by its drafting family leave policy for our employees. That is, we started, I introduced it, had some conversation. We expect to have that back at a committee, so if that's a topic of interest, stay tuned. That'll be back in committee and then back at council in the new year, hopefully. But the real, the real reason that we're here today is a happy thing, our annual holiday gift card for our gift card program for our employees. This is a holiday gift and bonus that we do for our employees every year. We, once again, the committee is recommending to council that we, that we thank our employees who we are very grateful for all their hard work during the year with this small token of our appreciation. And once again, this year, we are recommending two hundred and fifty dollar gift cards for each of our full-time employees. This year, we're adding kind of a official designation that part-time employees will also receive gift cards, but theirs will be at the hundred dollar level. So I am, I need to make a motion that council, to council, that we, to recommend, that we recommend to the manager, or to manager, I guess, to implement our holiday gift card program. Start, please, for the holidays.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second in the authorized village manager to implement the, including holiday gift card program in accordance with the same as we've done in the past. Any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second in the authorized village manager to implement gift card program in the same as we've done in the past. On paper? Not opposed, being noted that that resolution passed.
Thanks.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I want to mention five items out of my managers' report. First, a little bit about the savings that our residents have realized from the energy aggregation program, primarily the electric aggregation program. So far, from January through September, the reports came out that our residents have saved over six thousand dollars. I am hoping our application for the, we, we're starting to take advantage of that program. The second item in regards to the Duke National Gas Line. The, this past month, the Ohio Power Siding Board did approve Duke's application to install the central corridor gas line. That is a project that has been in works for quite some time and will affect Amberly Village on the southwestern part of the village, the industrial area, because it does from the power loss and rotor tracks that travel north and south, using the same rotor track across section four. They have been given green light to proceed with that in the year. The third item is the leaf collection that is ongoing, has been for the last month and a half. Most will continue to collect leaves as residents propose to the adjacent street. We will be collecting leaves up through December the twenty-seventh. At the same time, we're still collecting a brush light purpose, collecting brush at the same time. Once we get into January, the collection will cease and we will go back to full brush collection. Sorry, emphasis will then be on still house control. In September, council was asked to take action on applying for a grant for North Farm Press. And so that grant was submitted, however, the village was not successful and receiving approval from the integrated committee, which is a step before it goes to Ohio Public Forest Commission. This is for the area of Farm Press, affects order and South Farm Press, as well as part of Cade. So this is the fifth year that we've been turned down for that project. Good news is that we did make a grant for the contingency funds, but we believe that at least two or three projects would have to drop out for the village's North Farm Press Drive project in the fall. One of the things that we committed to was the application for a piece of Cade was through a different grant process. We will find out most likely in February if we're successful with that or not. If we are successful with that, that positions us differently for the Farm Press grant application for OPWC for next year. After all that has occurred, most likely in the winter, we'll be having a streets committee meeting to talk about the road condition assessment, the options we have in regards to street reconstruction and looking for other sources of funds, how we might be able to approach streets like Farm Crest and others in the village that need some of those competition. And to end on a positive note, just to give you an idea of the grants that the village has been successful in two thousand nineteen, village has been successful with over a hundred and thousand of grants. The budgetary has heard about the most recent one, which is mini excavator to use at the compost site, your site, which we also received money this year for the payroll task force and for Ohio Power Fire Marshal Training. That's in addition to some overtime, we can compensate for, improve the safety of the town. But pretty impressive, over a hundred thousand dollars have been brought back to the village, opposed to your tax dollars and being brought back to the area of that position.
Any questions for me?
Two things, really quickly, on, on Farm Crest, obviously, I've probably said this in the streets committee meeting, but just want to make sure that when we have those meetings, that we have plenty of notice for the residents on the streets for trying to follow along on what's happening with, with that particular issue and that we're just, you know, giving a lot of notification to them and keeping them in the loop, good, bad and ugly, unfortunately. On the, on the Duke pipeline, I know you may not know yet and I certainly don't know, but it, it seems that, that is the thing that has happened. There are still intervenors, including Amberly, and there may be discussions ongoing, my understanding, potentially about, and no, but certainly talks about litigation and, and challenging in the courts and that sort of stuff. This may not be over and certainly even in what, again, my understanding is, is that there were a variety of conditions, even on what the OPWC did, that included a lot of meetings with communities like that, even before construction and all kinds of stuff. So we, first of all, we may not have heard the end of it. We may still be, I mean, this is sort of a general question and comment over here and we've just may not know enough yet. Maybe this is a, more information at our next meeting, we'll know more about what the status of that is. But in addition, we also would expect that if all of that fails, that there'll be more reports and reporting hopefully to the village and sad that you'll, you'll have more for us. That's a comment, but I think a question, yes, sort of, yes. Okay. Thank you.
I had the same question about pipeline. It was my understanding, I did, I was not aware of appeals or litigation, but, but they are supposed to be pre-construction with every community that's involved and is, is the intervener group, the legal group, is that still active at all or could it be or?
Yes, it is still active. There was a conference call last week among various solid representatives.
Personally, speaking myself, I've seen him in our, his presence in that group.
We are.
You know, kind of, I limited him with kind of research, he commits some kind of process, but at least staying on board with it. Thank you.
We are. Any other questions for me? Not chief, you have any to the report? Okay. For the mayor's report, first of all, in the village manager's report towards the end of the report is the meeting scheduled for two thousand twenty. Please all council members look at that meeting schedule at our January meeting. We will address any conflicts as we, we do in the past and we can, at January meeting, pass by resolution any dates due to conflict with Jewish holidays or anything where we have to move. But please plan on bringing your calendars with you for the January meeting so that we can resolve any potential conflicts. Secondly, with respect to committee assignment for the council term two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one, I have the proposed committee assignments. They are virtually identical to what we have in the prior council term. The only change will be on the Rock Committee and that Councilwoman Kaymine will be replacing Councilwoman Hattonback. That was done to better balance the committee assignments across everybody. All other assignments are proposed to be the same, but if there are any, please let me know so I will pass out those committee assignments to everyone. The only other item I want to mention, the environmental spirit ship committee has established their meeting timetable for two thousand twenty. The next meeting will be January twenty-seventh. They will again meet eight times during two thousand twenty. Meetings are generally on the fourth Mondays of every, of the months that they hold, hold meetings. They occur at seven o'clock in the community room. Meetings will occur in the months of January, February, March, May, July, September, October, November. I know in the case of the month of May, due to Memorial Day occurring on that fourth Monday, it is earlier and I need the meeting schedule for, I think November, November's one in some times, I hesitate because of Thanksgiving, but I think it's not. And Tammy, I think those are on our website now or will we? Okay. And that concludes my mayor's report. Any questions? If not, any new business? Not?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session to consider the annual review of the village manager, including employment and compensation of village.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second in the adjournment to executive session to consider the appraisal of the village manager and compensation of the village manager. Any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second in the adjournment to executive session. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Hank Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthin.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
And for those present at the end of the executive session, we will be coming back in general session, but it will probably be just adjourned. The, consistent with what we've done in passing, the evaluation of village manager, this, this is, this probably will continue into our January meeting where we finalize. And at the January meeting, we will make a report out to the public on what the council has determined with respect to the appraisal of the village manager, including compensation. So if you want to weigh around and, it may not be necessary.